To approve. Taking action.
I guess that's true. Well, everybody look over here a minute.
You know, you're only making payments to us. I'll hold up the difference for us.
Okay.
You guys got taking action.
We probably should approve them though, because we elected our.
Yeah, we did. So.
Added it. Okay, so we're adding that to agenda.
And we need. Look at my agenda, I guess we need.
Yeah, you need to amend the minutes. I wasn't here.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so after the amended agenda, I get approval on motion to approve the amendments.
I'll make a motion to approve with the correction of Velma.
Yes.
I'll second.
All neighbors.
Alex Danes.
Yeah.
Um, okay, moving on to the budget review. So, um, do you want to discuss off here with the overall budget sheet?
All right, yeah. Just to let you know that here, the overall budget sheet again, second one we have here, I think, as you've quoted, mine, I place the two thousand, which one is more expensive, you know.
Oh, thank you, yeah.
And in particular, I'm gonna be dedicating twenty-five expenses. Then I propose over. And the other thing I've done here is I've also changed, um, as I'm gonna propose tonight, those capital changes. So I've taken three hundred thousand dollars out of this budget that we have to allocate to collect taxes. So the bottom line will be, um, this whole expansion will be six million sixty-one and forty, an increase of a hundred and seventy-one thousand, or one minute, or three percent overall budget change. So that's if you improve the capital costs that I've been suggesting. This part of the agenda.
Perfect.
I think that, you know, changed the things that I wanted to highlight.
Yeah, thank you for adding the expense.
Sure.
I know it's not our budget, but have you heard anything more about the school budget? As far as I know, last time it was like, it was, I can't remember what the percentage was, but it had gone up quite eight percent, I think.
Yeah, seven percent. Six point six million.
But you haven't heard any more as far as.
Uh, no, I think they got a further deliberation, so I never thought, clearly nobody's seen. Finance director used to help me today, just to see where we're in a real estate update.
Okay.
Not sure he needs to know that it's more than that. That was it.
Definitely. I think Chip has been going to the meetings, because I, I called him and told him I wasn't able to go. So I think he's been going to the meetings, so he has the budget book.
Yeah.
I don't know if he's coming to the selectmen's meeting Monday night or not.
Yeah, you know, it would be nice to know, if I get, if I get further into it, I, you know, may, you know, may know. We know the town, um, we know what the projected for the school budget. So, you know, when I look at the overall, we're anticipating overall. Down in the community, we're probably gonna be somewhere. The tax rate about twelve dollars to twelve fifty, I was hoping to be less by next year. Now, the, your run-up piece was seven point seven percent, uh, six million six hundred forty-eight thousand. That very much was the last number we got. From that. Uh, Jen's here.
Yeah.
You know, I think, uh, to keep it going, I think that is a, there was a, uh, three point eight percent of fourth banking balance. Then the capital. As I would propose to take that twenty-five thousand that she not going on this side, but how it was very different conference in Boston. Behind the playgrounds, so. We may adjust that next year based on. He can learn the ropes a little bit.
So you take your own. Someday. So it's easy to set back there.
Someday we hope, but maybe you should all listen well.
How are your programs going?
Great, very strong.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have, um, five fifteen, hundred and eighteen kids registered for the summer rent program this year. Uh, we have two full buses on field trip days, and we also have the mini bus news um, on all the field trip days. We do have a little bit of a waiting list now, but so far it's not enough to justify an additional bus and additional staffing that I'd have to come back and ask for. The board after school program is growing strong, you know, we dropped back a lot after COVID. Not as many when things started opening back up again after COVID, we weren't getting as many kids as we had when pre-COVID. But we're back up to those pre-COVID numbers now, things are strong. Things are good.
Wonderful.
They're going to have to do this program.
And it looks like your projected revenue.
You said three thirty-five.
Three thirty-five.
Yeah. This year, we're looking at three hundred, at the end of the last, when I was there, we came in at three oh one.
Yeah.
Looks like your, your biggest jump is like the insurance.
Yeah.
You know, is that, um, like staff insurance or just health insurance?
And you thought about change, yeah.
The health insurance.
Which is finally, you know, you just.
Right.
A job for a while.
Yeah. So, I think, if you know what I mean, let's just jump ahead to the revenue direction.
Good. You think, you think we're going to have any more for these guys?
Yeah.
As I say, it's the buses, so, you know, like we're putting the twenty-five thousand aside, or twenty thousand for the bus. The bus that we have, the two, we have two buses now, or?
We have one bus, we're, right now, we're lying on our twenty-one for the second bus, summer.
Okay.
Um, I, we are working on driver training right now, Tyler's been working for me and Keno Fordrick. Um, I'm a D O T trainer, and so we're trying to get some more bus drivers on board. We were working together today. And I know that Keno Fordrick had asked for the use of an R F twenty-one bus for April vacation. I mean, we received an email today from R S twenty-one telling him that he couldn't go to some of the places that he wanted to go to, because they thought they were too far away. Uh, they also talked with us about, um, potentially charging us mileage, dollar sixty-five a mile, or something like that, to use the buses um, for this summer, which I, I spoke to them about, you know, our budget was already set, and we've already started taking where this raises, and, you know, it would be difficult for us to jump into that uh, without that being figured into our costs and, you know. So they did come back and say that they were gonna consider it again next year, and they were trying to give us enough notice, but I think, um, you know, we haven't gone so far as to purchase a second bus yet, because the only time we really need a second full-size bus is during the summer months. So I think we need to decide if we are gonna wanna rent those buses essentially, or if we wanna invest in the second one of our home.
But then, and how old is our current bus, do you know?
Twenty nineteen, we bought it during a little bit of.
Okay, so that's not too, too bad.
Yeah, no, it's good.
Yeah. Yeah.
Then we got, we had a mini bus as well.
Yeah.
Stayed together, get down for a while.
Right, that was free for, that was something that our, everyone was getting rid of, and we put some money into that, and that alone, we were able to do a ski bus this winter that we've never done before with that bus, and, um, there's demand for more. That's over tonight, and if you were driving, we have more flexibility to do those night weekend programs.
Yeah. I just didn't know how old this bus was, and soon we'd have to replace it.
No, it'll be well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Our issue.
I mean, you never know, but I guess.
Our issue twenty-one doesn't have another bus this year that they're trying to get rid of?
They, they just presented, uh, two buses to us, both at a hundred and twenty plus mileage, a thousand miles, and they're both not going through.
Okay, yeah.
So it's really, it'd be based on the buy effort, yeah.
Yes, no.
It's better for us to look for a huge bus like you did with the man here and purchase something.
Uh, Roger always told me that if you look underneath, there's crossbars underneath, and those crossbars rust out because of all the salt on the road. And once those are rusted out.
Yeah.
It's really no good, it's expensive to fix it, so, and that's, that's what Apple's, you know, we could.
I know. They're hard to do, yeah, absolutely.
From all.
Yeah.
You don't think that?
Thank you.
Yeah, you do, thank you.
Yep.
All right, so, um, let's talk about the speed of red.
Sure, um, and you have, you know, the chief, uh, what I did is I, I narrated a little bit, and I gave you the budget in two thousand twenty, obviously, uh, two thousand twenty-four, and then what we collected is, is two thousand twenty-five, as well, we're checking uh, moving forward. So we're gonna have a little bit of a hard, um, projection, both of our team comes from several, several areas, but, uh, you know, excise tax is always a good one for us, um, and then state revenue sharing, that number is gonna be tossed by me. Um, and then the big ones now also is the influence of recreation, um, which continue to, to arise. Again, the way our revenue is set up is maybe slightly different than others, because we lump our revenue together as an anticipated revenue piece, and then offset it from the, uh, from the amount that we're gonna accept, you know, collect from taxes. If you look back at overall budget sheet, again, if you that I want to know, like, six million sixty-one and forty in there, then I have the anticipated revenues of three million. Then what we're actually gonna raise tax, three million from a thousand eight forty-one, which actually is less than what we did the year four. So, um, those revenue pieces are very important to us, we do a little pulse.
How sure is that state revenue sharing?
Right now, sure.
Okay.
Bless you.
Bless you.
Yeah, they, um, again, I have a, I have a hundred thousand dollars in there for, uh, building permits sometimes, I, you know, right now, we're tracking seven, four, we're using four, we have a hundred and ten thousand. We get a little bit less that we're gonna be off collecting from the, um, projects. Um, but I think we're gonna see, we're, we're already experiencing more permits, we, you know, we have to build, so I think that is gonna hold pretty strong for us. It's valuable.
It's gonna hold strong, but it's gonna be an off year, I suppose, maybe.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
As predicted already, and it's, is already showing historically numbers year to year, it's already down.
Is it down?
Yeah.
Is it because of, uh, the, uh, projected cost to go home, or is it because of the financing, or is this a scene of?
People are just not moving their money. Yeah, more than anything else, that's the biggest, um, thing we're seeing anyway, as agents, is that people just don't want to move their mind. They're staying, but they're dealing, they're dealing with, they're. Yeah.
Job security.
Job security insurance, or, I'm sorry, I, sorry, they're gonna go back up again, they're down a little bit now, but they're gonna go back up to or what we've seen, so.
Problem now is to sell your house, where do you go? The inventory is so low out there.
Yeah, which is always historically the thing that's not here too, I think it does go up.
Yeah.
The, I mean, it doesn't feel like spring yet, it's moving forward, but when that does happen, not like, they, there'll be more things that come on, but I just don't think that you're gonna see the numbers, at least in the market, historically, you know, like last year and year before, held for us. But still hopeful, I mean, everyone knows there's still a lot of room, and, you know, we're lesser value now in terms of like purchasing, so.
Yeah.
That's a good thing.
Yeah.
And a good time to have, you know, take our family to that sort of place.
So we need to drive us to.
Yeah, directly, yeah, numbers make one side of.
Yeah.
Uh, or, you know, the.
Yeah, I, again, I try to be as conservative as possible, I think, uh, last year, my, our collection was slightly more than I had anticipated, so, I mean, that is a big, I, it goes with, it goes with the funding. Uh, undesigned fund out this week, probably.
Awesome, does anybody have any questions about the revenue? Dana, don't make it sound weird.
Yes.
Yes. Um, all right, so, cattle's life.
Right, I, you have, you have several for me, uh, I was waving a big, uh, my thoughts and my thinking about capital, I think, I, I totally get how I was reading it all, and I wanted to go back and take a look at the budget really, yeah. And so, again, that would be unaudit, uh, our audit financials, and then what I, on audit in the balance, well, that's a six thirty twenty-four, which gives us five million nine hundred sixty thousand, price of twenty-two dollars, ninety-one cents. We have to keep twenty percent of that, um, in, uh, in my balance, simply because of the balls we have, and based on projections we have for the county, for the school, for the town right now, and it's over ten million three hundred six thousand, so we have to keep two million again. Two million sixty-one thousand leaves three million eight hundred ninety-nine thousand that will remain as possible use, because whatever the closing is to use six hundred eighty-five thousand of that money and create the capital projects funding for municipal office equipment, computers, and thirty thousand. The transfer station, capital equipment repairs for thirty, uh, recreation bus and playground placement, we talked a little bit about tonight, for twenty-five.
Which I remember, just a quick side, Jen talked about, um, last year, when somebody asked her, like, the company that, when they were, they quit the order, right, for the equipment?
Yeah.
And then they were like, oh, well, did you, how did you do this? Because they worked a lot of our departments and programs and paths, and, um, Jen was saying that they were asking how they, how the money was funded, she was like, well, we, you know, we have to raise money, she's like, yeah, no, it was like, it's been our, you know, our own stuff, but, and so I think it's smart to do that, so, yeah, just a quick aside, because, you know, we didn't have to raise the money.
Right, a lot, often, a lot of teams do that, and that's why there is, it's, it's close.
Yeah.
We just had a long deal, so.
Right, yeah.
And then public works, equipment and buildings, uh, proposing three hundred thousand, and then fire department equipment, at three hundred thousand. Um, you take that in, six eighty-five, obviously, I'm, we're moving three hundred thousand, okay, um, for requests from taxpayers, so.
Do we have any type of, uh, sample equipped with capital reserve for the, uh, fire department expansion? We don't have anything put aside for that yet.
No, we're gonna, what we're gonna do with the fire department expansion, is if, you know, you recall, you can change the, um, the use of the chip on the rental cottages.
Okay.
So we can use that funding to fund that project, so, um, we're going to, you know, obviously, we're going to bond that. And then the bonding is from that money to pay.
Okay.
To pay for. So there'll be no impact on taxpayer, because that's important.
Okay.
When you go public works buildings, is that to expand the building or to maintain the building?
No, that would be for expansion at some point, something that'll have to come back to you folks.
Yeah, we have.
Further approval, but.
Like, that's a stop.
That's, it's not the start.
Okay.
I, I, I think it's not the start to, to do, um, perhaps a mean engineering or technical work, uh, so and so. We're, we're pretty close, so perhaps hiring ourselves and correct it for public works. Good. I think, so, and, you're about to say the same statement.
And so you're expecting them just to upcoming fiscal year, we just be like planning that or getting things ready for it, and then?
I, I don't think I thought about it much, more than you put the three hundred thousand, and you have to, to then give us some money, aid you to higher engineering, then we need some, um, maybe, as it depends on what's the cost, I mean, care of things at the, the steel building, fifty-five, fifty-five, fifty years, but you over a couple hundred thousand, I'm sure, we still got that concrete that's gonna go underground. I know we need to, uh, get something with water wells as we go up there, um, we need better accommodations for the staff to rest, train, all those kinds of things, so, I think it's gonna, but I thought of three hundred thousand, it's, it's, start, getting things going.
And I think it's modest, but I think we're also a modest town, so I don't think there'd be a test out at this point, it's my opinion, I mean, I don't think the public works currently, they don't that's, some people are seeing that, and thinking.
What's that? I'm sorry, near you.
We, like, the public works are being, like, put in, in, like, they're already built in.
Oh, I haven't seen it.
It's only good at our, it's true.
Yeah, I haven't driven, anyway.
It's expanded, I mean, it's taking a long time, they're like way up, rather than what they thought they were gonna be, so, like, it's gonna be a long that's all, but, uh, they have to take the breaks, the weather assistance, this winter, they've launched a few before, um, I don't know, I think, yeah. But anyway, just, we're modest now, so, like, you know, sometimes that gets away from us, people start seeing, like, those point out around us, they think, oh, we need, so, so.
I would say sometimes, like, some companies like Tacco or whatever, they will include the engineering along with their.
Correct.
Their building type of thing, yeah.
Right, I, I think I really, you know, just, it's been, we're able to successfully have money aside.
Yeah.
I think then we just keep it in that process or something. I'm really trying to, right now, focus on the fire station, try to, that, that's a couple of things that have been first, then something beside. So that's my proposal.
What about the playground replacement, we don't?
Well, again, that's what I said about Jen, like, if you put it aside now, so.
If you put it. Five, if it's twenty-four.
But just needed for the bus, though, don't we?
We're twenty for the bus, five, we're leaving it out. This equipment will bear it off, and at some point it will happen to replace, so that's what we're, that, that was her, her thought, Ross was one of the staff, putting somebody aside.
For, to replace this stuff?
Replace that box, yeah. But then we, we spent about ninety thousand.
Ninety thousand, yeah.
Well, look at, look at the school playground, you, you had worked on.
Yeah, but that was.
The initial one, I think.
That was awful to begin.
Yeah, but then they've replaced it since, they've replaced it since, so.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, yeah, because there was a tire tannic, and then there was the other playground.
I was there, yeah.
And then the last one, yeah.
Well, that used to, that was something to process, I think, it was always something, a community event, you know, play that.
Yeah, yeah.
I know, I'm trying to. It's not, yeah, it wasn't about, yeah, either. I knew that was what, hanging out during, getting on. Our parents were going to kick it out, they'll end up sucking. They were, uh.
Oh, you should have been up there when it was nothing but sand.
That's true.
There wasn't even a swing.
Didn't have to.
There wasn't even a swing.
Whatever they have, I mean, it's just like.
There wasn't even a swing.
Get the next swing on Christmas, because it's boss.
Yep.
That's playground area was our first baseball field.
Oh, really?
Oh, was it? Yeah.
My, my kids played on that, what a playground is today.
Yeah.
Easy.
And Tom was there.
Yeah, and I think the first piece of playground equipment was a set of metal swings.
And they had the tire tannic. I don't remember that.
Titanic.
Oh, that was a big tire tannic with something, it was all made out of tires, it was all made out of tires, and it looked like a ship, and the kids would climb up on.
Like, the tires, like, they felt. Um, but yeah, I mean, to your point, like, I do appreciate that that seems like a lot, but I think, thinking back to last year, I've done, as I've raised money for this, because our, the budget, I think, is, are, just to have, so, so, we don't think so, too. And I really feel like that playground is a huge asset, it really is, the community loves it.
Well, I, I remember when my kids were little, that was a hard part, was you couldn't go to the school playground, because there was school going on, and so I had to take my kids out of town to go to West Kennybunk or into Kennybunk to use any kind of playground, because we didn't have anything in town.
Yeah.
And, and the, the school playground wasn't geared to the real, real little ones either, so this is a big plus.
I use it almost time.
Yeah.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it would be nice to, if, you know, if the money would be there, to put like a little, uh,
Zippo?
No, it's something, well, later on, a gazebo, but maybe something over the picnic table, so you have a shady area a little bit and stuff, you know, uh, as far as from weather and stuff.
True, for, 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 yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah. But, uh, yeah, definitely, you know, I think it's a big plus.
Okay, any other questions about the, 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 the? All right, we want to, please. Maybe, um, maybe you heard this.
Okay.
Explain that, that's.
Well, I, I, I think we, it's just gonna, it's probably everything I have to, on the, on the. Some direction, force, bowls, and it's going to be a lot of, 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 so, um, this, this minimal, I'm buying here, if you apply our exposure, it's gonna be, it's a big, efficient. And then it would be true for them. And it would be something that would be an option for employees in future years, if so decided.
I guess my thinking on a little bit too was the fact that, um, I think you had said the pay raises were set at four percent.
Okay.
And that, that, you know, a cola's three point five, but I'm wondering, by doing the eighty-five fifteen and the purrs, is that also considered like a small pay raise in a way that, you know, that maybe to offset that increase, so we went back to three point five or three percent increase rather than four percent, if we're gonna give them more insurance benefit?
Well, you're, you're gonna go, um, yeah, insurance benefits is gonna be like a hundred and fifty-one dollars a month, switch. Um, their, their contribution would go, the due insurance would go over six hundred dollars down in order.
Right.
So you're gonna give them a better opportunity, the main curves were the ones, the town's the one that really.
Is paying more to them.
More, simply because these are finished rate fees. They're not fees that go directly to our employees, the employee has to pay for them.
They have to pay more.
That's right, they have to pay nine percent of the fire service, and seven percent that you can take the curse out of their own money.
But they also get to retire after twenty, twenty-five years, as opposed to being on social security, that you have to wait till you're sixty, sixty-something, so it, it is a benefit. I, this is just a thought I had as far as, you know, because the town is paying more one way or the other, you know, by supporting this, and I'm just thinking of this, the stock market this past week, and everybody's, you know, four oh ones and all, four oh seven, you know, four oh seven, yeah.
So we're gonna have this as a separate art, art.
Yes.
Okay. Well, we'll have to fund this at the seventy-eight thousand dollar figure, right?
No.
I, I can afford to fund it at, at thirty-two, no.
Yeah, but what if everybody decides, as you say here, to move over, then we're at seventy-eight, then we have to anticipate that, the article, right?
Yeah, that's what I, you're right.
Yeah.
So if you, if you want, if you want to move forward and be a separate, or not, you have to put the full amount.
Yeah.
Just so they know.
Right.
So you would put the full amount in there, but then the budget board and the select board, if we decide on the thirty-two, that would be the amount that we would propose?
No, I. No, I think the top stage, you put seventy eight, and right now, we know it's gonna be thirty two, so it'd be a savings, but. If somebody else comes to come on and get in.
The money's there, yeah, okay.
I did, I did watch it.
You know what neighboring municipalities offer this versus who doesn't offer it for their employees?
Makers?
Yeah.
I believe everybody around us is offering.
It's just, we hear from the fire.
Yeah, it sounded like they really want it.
Yeah, I also, Jason is probably the most. It's not here, but he does, he, I don't know, like R, we're counting it, but it's not, Bitterberg does.
Oh, yeah.
Soffo does, Soffo does.
Yeah, Eddie Wells does.
I think this year is the first year they've been pretty good as far as coverage, cause before that they were always kind of. Short on, you know, trying to find staffing, you know, because for the fire department.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Yeah, it's always been kind of.
And they've offered it to several people who declined because we don't have majors.
It's been, it's been.
That's just.
Yeah, a limit for.
Yeah.
It'd just be known to be lots.
Yeah, I think Carol has mentioned it too, if we were public work.
Public work, yeah.
All right. Just gonna have to decide, we might want to put it on, have the lawyers decide.
I don't have any objection putting it on, the question is whether we're gonna say.
We're gonna support whatever.
You think it should be a separate article or shouldn't?
Boy, I think it's gotta be a separate article, I think it fully explains what's going on here to the citizenry, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah. Whether it's gonna say, select board recommends it, budget board. Question. I know.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I can see the need for it, just to keep the staffing, cause otherwise, I mean, the road crews the same way, they, they, they train somebody, they get them. With their C D L and then they take off and go to another town.
That has it.
You know, and.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Our family, we're gonna be forced to do.
Yeah.
My drive film.
In order to get people and keep up.
And keep them, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you see that, or I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say the possible benefit of, of reducing turnover of employees too, I mean, it, it costs a lot of money when you have to turn over.
It does.
So, you know, I'm sure it's gonna cost the town more, but in the long run, it might actually be.
Awesome, I get it.
And I know it's, we've seen lots of the version of that, which is, um, are people loyal because of that program? Like, or because of how they feel and where they come, I mean. Then that doesn't have to be a benefit, like they could just like know that exists and they're gonna stay, you know, depending on their age or like, you know, how they get left, and they're gonna, you know, like.
I think it's both, I think it's culture and it's this, I, I work somewhere that has main curves, I've opted out a bit, but I certainly. There are people that have been there for twenty, a lot of people that have been there for twenty plus years. I think, I think a lot of it has to do with this program.
Awesome, yeah.
And it's.
Same, is they know what they're in the picture.
Yeah.
And they could bounce to, you know, another municipal job, state job.
Right, how they say, cause that's good then.
Right.
But the benefit and the culture, you know, and, and I think it.
Yeah.
The, the other.
You work closely?
I'm Portland.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was, it was a strength of our.
Right, right, yeah.
Right.
If we give majors that may, that may be able to bring somebody in.
Right, right, you might, like Jason, like, um, Andy was saying, you know, like you take some of the bigger cities. Bitterford, Portland, they might love coming to work for Rundle, with a smaller vol- call volumes, you know, and stuff, especially as they get older.
That's true.
You know, and, uh. But if we don't have it, then they're losing out on their benefit that way, you know, so.
So, okay. I will redo the number to the total. I think there's a certain amount of which that main course is going to have, we want to hire, I'll make sure I have that. Got it?
Mm-hmm.
Then, that's a decision, but if I have any. I'll be involved with that.
All right, any other questions, um, about the current object at this time? Uh, we had the empty health insurance.
No, again, uh, my, our proposal is to, is to come up. Our contribution piece from eighty twenty to eighty five fifteen, and I provided that, that's our.
And that's already been factored in on this, correct, on the budgets or?
It's not in the budgets, it will be a separate.
This is so.
Be separate, I have a, I have a benefit, you. Have a, and fourteen six right now.
I think that's a no brainer, to be honest, I mean, families are struggling and when you're talking about, what is it, six hundred dollars a month, when you jump to a family plan, that's huge.
Yeah, it's.
It is a small factor into, yeah.
Yeah.
Basically, towns competing against each other like these days, huh?
Yeah.
For, for employees, yeah.
The other, the other thing on this, on this switch, it is something that you falsely agree with about. How should we present, should, because we already have eighty twenty. Should we also be presenting our narrative, certain working out, to say we're gonna go to eighty five fifteen? Or does a vote then allow me to incorporate within the overall budgets and reflect it that way? What's your thoughts?
I'm not.
I don't apply it.
No, but I think the overall budgets is already, it'll be factored in, part of the, I don't think we have to have.
I don't think so either.
No.
Okay, so if you guys say, okay, we're gonna move to eighty five fifteen, now just, why do the, the budgets reflect that?
Do you want a motion on that, to go with eighty five fifteen?
It would be great.
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second.
Yes, we, we got to have two votes, both with the select.
Yeah.
We have that.
We have the slide we're gonna.
We do, unless I can make a vote.
Yeah.
We have no one.
Yeah.
And.
So.
All is good. Hello.
You got strong.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to support the eighty five.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Okay.
So you said it, it, eight, eight people are currently anticipated to be.
Yeah.
Affected by that.
How many town plates do we have, hold on, town plates? And eight, eight insurance and others, okay.
Eight, take family coverage or?
The family, yeah.
Yeah, right, right, yeah.
Right, cause some of them are just individuals, you know.
Some might choose to add family.
And I think when I hit the, uh. I think all the works budget, the, the old positions, I took it, but it's, well, you can still, I'll probably add it here.
Yeah.
So this is like a load of them?
Um.
It's on, like the.
I'll just, I'll go, I'll make sure.
So like to the same point as the main verse of like seventy eight thousand, it's like, well, it's sort of like that, so what we're on next, be.
Thank you, I have no employees, I really appreciate that. That observation.
Um, okay, so any further?
No, I don't, well.
Oh, yeah, so if you guys did proceed this, um. The ten year public program, and a lot of it's passed now, so it's not going to be a valid, because then, you know, it's sort of.
Yeah, it'll be repeated.
Yeah, yeah. And then we'd get out the, probably the fourth, so putting ahead is the ten is our.
Right. And then we'll, 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 we'll.
Was there something from the state about the bridge on the Downing Road? I know they have a bridge on thirty five over by Tom's they're gonna replace, but there was nothing about that.
I received help out of that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, yeah, it's.
Like that, yeah.
Yeah, there was, there was, uh, there was a part of the V O T on the down of the bridge. But it's, it's a few more years out.
Okay, right. I didn't want to pave, I didn't want to do any paving or anything on that road, then all of a sudden the state come right in behind us and tear it up.
Yeah, well, no, I think we have any, uh, no, no, we have some bridges that we're gathering now.
Yeah.
Speaking of the state, what we did on Long Haven, is that like they're final, or are they trying to redo the, that part of the tracks on Long Haven before they finish?
Well, you bring up a good point, because the, uh, the train, the. The river is gonna be pumping through here in Stockton Bay, in the status of, working through. Uh, in place of all the rotas.
Yes, I've seen the stats on the site, but I assume they're.
Gonna be closing intersections, um, in terms of redesign or updating that, because that's a more planned. Um.
So that pavement they did was asses.
I think it's pretty crap.
I think it's really crappy, and I was like, it seems like it was half done. On this, like, you know, like, it's a major.
Is that on Long Haven? Really? I haven't been down that way in a while.
But, yeah.
I don't know that actually. Yeah, it's like, hey. And, and then she's.
But he said.
Said no. But I was so, maybe, he, he might know this is contract, so like he just kind of do more than he's been able to. Yeah, but unfortunately, I think that was sort of my.
Yeah, it's not, it wasn't a very good job, we would be able to invent something if you. As a senior around the world.
Yeah, right, and so we, our, our parlors, our house, our fire.
So I don't know, I didn't want to proceed in terms of voting, I mean, we're, we're about selecting the short time, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, Dan, we're here, we may even know. Just like you all, Chase, it's relocated, uh, remarkable, I think his last meeting with the slide, probably. He just sounds like, well, I think he has the, uh, it's out of buying.
Yeah, so it's the states, yeah.
So he's, he's telephoned, he's, he's gonna be deciding this decision, so. I've already, we'll talk about it on Monday, but I. There's no reason for us to have, courtesy me to, uh, fill that decision. Very close to it.
Election.
Yeah.
We have, I think we have one candidate now that's big time. But what I'm saying is that if Dan was here tonight, probably have full, they could take an action on it, so.
Did you want to take an action on your proposal as far as the, uh?
Love it.
I mean, unless you want to waste our, our.
Yeah.
Yeah. Capital project funding?
Oh, yeah.
Love you, I have to say.
That way you could figure it. It's not working right.
Yeah.
And we're probably gonna be looking for another five or six years, set aside for.
Yeah.
Select, select board.
Way, way that is set out now, we got, we got the money there, you can do it, and then. What Tom's saying, was saying is that. The last couple of years, we take it, so that when there's a fund balance surplus, put it in a warrant article. So we, when the select board sets the tax rate, they can use that money to balance the tax rate or reduce the rate. Last year we used it to hold the state seventeen, so, um, it's worked out as their good tool for that. Um, except that we're gonna keep it, so. It doesn't, doesn't belong to.
Right, it's taxes already collected, so.
Right.
Doesn't make any sense, it says sit in a bank and.
Right, not, not overly of large amount, right.
So we're voting on the, um, the cattle hunt question.
Correct.
Um, so you guys have that in your packet here? Does anybody else have any further discussion about it, before we vote? Everybody, this is two separate work.
Yeah.
So, without further discussion, everybody, that was a good question.
No, I didn't know it's gonna make a motion.
Okay, I was gonna say, let's do, let's put a motion if that's, uh.
I'm ready.
Yeah, I made a motion to approve the total from the fund balance, I think you have it here at six hundred and eighty five thousand.
I do.
Yes.
Wait a second.
Yeah.
Second. It's not coming out.
I know, it's too much money.
I joke with them kind of numbers.
Uh, select board in favor?
Yes.
Make a motion for the budget.
I'll make the same motion.
You guys want to?
Second.
Uh, all this part here.
Yeah.
Very intense.
Other than those two pieces, I think it's best to sit on the other items and, um, I hope those, um. You know, I'm sure Dan will speak here for a moment, but we're in our, we're in the.
Yeah. How is the valuation thing coming?
Uh, it's gonna be working. It's gonna be working, but. They're gonna be reviewing sometime in. June. They'll be pulling the earnings for the folks, which gives you your technical value, you have a piece of that. The folks, and then. We'll upload all that into the, uh. The computers, about two thousand for everybody, and then, hopefully in August. So what would set the new tax rate, so that new overall town value.
I have a question, I have a question, once they come up with that new value. Um, I, we have the homestead exemption, so even they come up with that new value, the office will automatically put in our homestead exemption. And our V A exemption. When they do our tax bill.
It would be, it would be my assumption that they will do that, but I'll follow up on that, make sure that it's.
That, that people don't have to reapply, no.
No, they shouldn't.
They shouldn't.
No, they should not have.
Never.
All right.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll check.
Uh, so the next meeting, two weeks from today. Right?
What's that date?
We're gonna be, we'll be brought up again.
Yes, they have.
I want it.
You want to go next Wednesday, the sixteenth instead? Is that one?
It's probably me.
And you need the stuff for the, uh, town report by May, don't you?
Yeah.
And.
Probably paper than they do next week.
What's that?
It's, it's probably better than they do next week.
That's fine with me, go on the, uh, go to sixteen, thanks.
That's, yeah.
Yeah.
And we'll try to take five of those, yeah, next. Great.
Does anybody have any other pieces of discussion, questions, comments? Motion.
So moved.
All right, second.
Second. No, no money, you can speak right up.
I'll listen to you. Thank you.